Your recommendation.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to start about less than two minutes. We're just getting our technical stuff out of the way. Countdown, are you ready? Alright, everyone. We're all here. Ready on the right? Ready on the left? Good evening, everyone. We invite you to come out to our regular scheduled City Commission meeting on April 11th. I'll open it up by having a roll call. Zone 1.
Present.
Zone 2.
Here.
Zone 3.
Present.
Zone 4.
Here.
And I'm here. We don't have our prayer of passage to get out here this evening, so I will do the honors. Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we come together to, again, get together to do the work of this great city. We thank you for all of those that have put forth the effort. We thank you for those that are coming out to support and to see what we are doing in this city. We ask you now that as we go through this meeting, that we will have it all in decent and honor, and that all things will be settled and all things will be good. This is what we ask you. In the name of Jesus' name, amen?
Amen.
Pledge the lead. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is safe, one nation under God, in the name of the Lord. Administrator of commissioners, are there any conditionals, conditions of deletion?
I would like to suggest that we have time for animal protection ordinance discussion.
So it's AG. I want to make it AG for what's the title?
Mayor, we just have one item that doesn't need to be on the meeting due to miscommunication, and it's 8E Concept Plan for LH for that. That's not necessarily going to be discussed. It should have been included in the.
It should not be included, 8E.
Eight, eight E.
E. So we're striking that?
Yes. It's a concept plan review LH for that.
Okay, striking 8E. And in your packets, there's a duplication. So pages 33 to 34 is a duplication. You can strike those pages. But it's in the sequence of numbers, so we will just eliminate pages 33 and 45.
Mayor?
Yes.
Speaking of the agenda, spoke with Commissioner Donato and she was missing four pages. So we found somehow the system was hot. Something went wrong. So if we go through, if that happens or if something, let me know. We're going to have a different system place for maybe in your packets or also going to be a notebook. Because it's very difficult for you to have hundreds of pages in front of you to have the work. And then something slips, falls in the lap, and next we know you're not the page you got. So hopefully what that'll do is ensure that every packet is identical. And Commissioner Donato's case, I think it was like 45 and 46, 105 and 106, something like that. So if we get through there and you're missing a page, I'm going to apologize now. We'll make sure that doesn't happen for me to be going out. And like I said, we can leave it in a notebook. I think it'll also be better organized for you to be easier to follow with the works.
Okay, so we have eliminated 8E. We've added 8G, Animal Control. Moving into the consent agenda. Asking for the minutes of the last meeting to be approved, any corrections, anything anyone like to say? The minutes of March 14th.
Mayor, probably the best way to address the consent agenda is to say that this is or something that is going to be approved without discussion unless one of the commissioners wants to pull an item. So better way to ask the commission, do you want, anybody want to pull an item on consent agenda for discussion?
Right.
And then you can also ask the public if they have any comments on the consent agenda. But not to pull an item, just if they have any comments.
Alright. Anybody clarify that? So everybody with consent agenda, which is the approval of minutes, acceptance of bills to be poured to be paid, and the acceptance of the monthly various points we will have a motion.
My motion, that be approved consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Reverend.
Second.
This second, hold the theater.
Aye.
Aye, any polls? None? There you go. So one, one poll. Is there any old business? Hearing none? We'll start with the ordinances. Ordinance 2402. Turn to the right, read the agenda.
Yes, Mayor. What past practice and a better way to handle these situations? What you have before you is you have a ordinance that has amended the comprehensive plan, which is ordinance 2024-02. Then you have ordinance 2024-03, which is rezoning the property. Both ordinances deal with the exact same property, the exact same project. It's just the two things that we have to do, you have to approve to allow this project to go forward. What I like to do is to read those ordinances. Like I'm at the beginning. There will be one presentation made about the project, a public comment about the project. But then when you get to voting on it, you will vote separately on each one. And the first one you have to take up is 2402, which is the comprehensive plan. Because no, we can't do any zoning, we can't issue any land development order that's inconsistent with our comprehensive plan. The density that the property owner is seeking exceeds what the future land use currently allows. So ordinance 24-02 is requested to increase that density. And then we have the rezoning that would also coincide with that. You also have here tonight a situation where sometimes you hear me say you're sitting as a legislative body, sometimes you're sitting as a quasi judicial body. Here you're sitting as a vote. And in ordinance 24-02, the comprehensive plan, that is a policy decision by you. Any changes to the comprehensive plan, that is a policy decision by you. You are sitting in a legislative authority, which means you have substantial discretion in approving or denying this policy change. That's a policy change that lies within your discretion. Unless you clearly abuse your discretion, the court's not going to review and change a policy decision you made. However, when you get to ordinance 24-03, that is quasi judicial. That is not set in policy. Now you're implementing policy and you're held to a totally different standard. And the standard is the decision you make has to be supported by substantial competent evidence. The applicant has the burden initially of presenting substantial competent evidence that they comply with the applicable city requirements for their request. And then the public or through discussions, other evidence may come forward, substantial competent evidence that would indicate it does not comply. But that is a tougher burden because now you have to have substantial competent evidence to support your decision. Whereas with the comprehensive plan 2402, you don't. You don't have to justify that decision. You said that's a bad policy from a legislative standpoint, I don't want to make that change. The advice I give, all the cities I represent, it's good to have these two come before you this way because you are seeing the project that your comprehensive plan will allow. If you don't like the project, deny 24-02. Why? Because you have discretion to deny it. Do not, and my advice is do not approve ordinance 24-02, but plan on denying ordinance 24-03. Because now you're going to have to have substantial competent evidence to support your denial. You don't need substantial competent evidence to support a denial of ordinance 24-02. So we're going to read both titles together. We're going to do one presentation, one public comment. That way we don't have to try to differentiate what comments are relevant to one ordinance and which comments are irrelevant to the other ordinance. We'll just present it all, evidence in, and then y'all can deliberate, and then we will go to ordinance 24-02 for your first consideration. Anybody have any questions? Question? Any of them? I'm going to read the ordinance. Ordinance number 2024-02, by title only for first reading. In ordinance of the city of Lake Helen, Florida, amending the Lake Helen Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map 2035, providing for a change in future land use designation on approximately 1.85 acres of land located at the northwest corner of the intersection of West Ohio Avenue and Church Street from single-family residential rural SFR-R to single-family low-density SFLD, providing for several ability and conflicts, providing for an effective area. Now ordinance number 2024-03, by title only for first reading. In ordinance of the city of Lake Helen, Florida, rezoning approximately 1.85 acres of land located at the northwest corner of the intersection of West Ohio Avenue and Church Street from single-family residential rural SFR-R to single-family residential 3SFR-3, providing for several ability and conflicts, providing for an effective area. Also, because one of the issues you're talking about tonight is quasi judicial, you should disclose any ex parte communication, just like we do when we do our certificates of appropriators. So if you've had any communication from third parties, which means you include staff, you include city consultants, and if somebody in the public has contacted you to discuss that we rezoning this project, then you should disclose the conversation, substance of the conversation. So the public knows that you've had that conversation. If anybody has rebutted that conversation, they have the opportunity to do.
And with that said, does anyone in the public that has public comments, they would come up with a group?
But yes, we have a process. Yeah, they can do, they can still have the card. And I believe staff will make their presentation first, the applicant will come up and do a presentation. Obviously, y'all have the ability to ask whatever questions you want through that process. And then it'll be opened up for public comment. Once public comment is in, then you probably have an opportunity for staff and the applicant to submit a, or say a minimal rebuttal. Then you will close off discussion and deliberate amongst yourselves.
Is there anyone here that has any public discussion that they would like to submit a blue card to speak on this particular item? You have a blue card? Want a blue card? Okay, so as soon as you have the lots of blue cards, you'll take them here in your order. And that way you can take them another time?
I understand, Mayor. That will be after other presentations. Right, come here.
Get it out of the way. We get it.
What's that?
I said, I wanted to get it out of the way, so they want to get it right.
Okay.
The blue card here. Now.
Ex parte communication first.
That is the question. Does anyone here on the commission have any discussion with anyone connected with this property? None?
Any ex parte communication?
No one? Present it? None has been had, so we will move there.
Step two is the city will do a presentation.
With you, your name?
Yes. With that, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Heather Verwiler. I am a staff consultant for the city in Planning Area, associated with our company. My company title is LPG Urban and Regional Planners. Our, my residential address is 10162 Pan Avenue, Mount Door, Florida. And we're here to present tonight the request for both, as the attorney alluded to, a content of plan amendment and a rezoning of the property at, on the northwest corner of West Ohio Avenue and Church Street. The property is currently vacant. It's approximately 1.85 acres in size. And the request at this time is to amend the future land use from the rural residential or single-family rural future land use to the low-density, single-family future land use. And the accompanying rezoning amendment would be to amend the rural residential land use, which allows currently a density of 1.25, or 2.5 acres, to the single-family RSF3 category, which will allow you density up to three units per acre. When staff did their analysis of this application, our analysis was predicated on the fact that there are several locations in the immediate area that already have this zoning that is being requested, and they aren't having this existing future land use sub density. So we looked at this as a transitional area, that the area is transitioning from a much rural, rural area to a more, not urban, more suburban area would be probably a better characterization of the area because there's been limited actual development. Some of these properties that have actually turned over and been rezoned in the area have actually physically been developed. And I want to acknowledge that the applicant is in the audience. So if you have specific questions for the applicant, they can make a presentation right after or kind of complete a presentation. With that, we found that the application as requested is consistent with your comprehensive plan. The fact that it's a transitioning, transitional area, and the request is adjacent to the actual form. So that being the case, even though the area is currently is less developed, there is areas that are in the existing development pattern that are transitioning into a more suburban-type density. As a result, we found that it's consistent with your comprehensive plan. Looking at the rezoning, again, in order for the project to be rezoned, to allow for an additional density, you have to have a comprehensive plan amendment. So we encourage the applicant to provide that small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to include as part of their request, which they had done with that. They did provide a conceptual sketch that shows theoretically that the property can in fact support additional units. That sketch should not be relied on. It's not a conceptual plan. It's really just a sketch showing that they can actually meet the requirements. If they're not bound by that, it's not part of your decision tonight. But that particular sketch shows that they need all of the requirements of the zoning district for the lots to support the density. They cannot get the whole six units because the lot, the area is under the two acres. So they get a percentage of that density based on the percentage of the area that they actually have, which is only 1.85 acres. It's under two acres, so they can't get a whole six units in there. And that's what that particular sketch demonstrates. It also demonstrates that access will be taken direct from the directive of the roadway. And so they will not be doing any internal roads and those types of things for, so they will not be eating up any of their additional acreage for those type of things. That means water retention and access and open space will all be commented on the individual lots. There will not be a subdivision in the sense that it's a formal subdivision where they're going to have improvements. The improvements will be consistent of the lots that are going to be created under a planning process should you decide favorably on the entitlements, right? So nothing happens if you're not in favor of the entitlements changing. But if you're in favor of the entitlements changing, that would then give them the opportunity to come back and bring forth what's called a final plan. In this case, it could be an preliminary plan and a final plan. With that, at this time, I'm open to any questions that you may have. But we found that both the comprehensive plan and the rezoning are consistent with both your comprehensive plan and your land development code. And we are recommending approval of those, of the changes. Now have the planning, the planning, land development?
Planning meeting?
Sorry, the planning meeting. There was some opposition to the applicant's proposal, and the committee did not find favorably to recommend approval on this application. So they basically stayed consistent with what the comprehensive plan currently has on that property and what the zoning is currently on that property. They encouraged the applicants to come back if they had additional information that they wanted to present. However, the process allows them to continue on to this board. They basically make a recommendation at the planning, at the local planning agency. And any final decision is really kicked to this, this committee, right? So the, the commission, or sort of the county city council is responsible ultimately for zoning changes and comprehensive plan changes. So we are following the process that statuteally laid out. And while I understand that some of the folks that spoke at the planning board are also, planning meeting are also here to give testimony. That's what the testimony was at that meeting. So just so you're aware of that.
And so the, the planning board decided not to approve this, but sent it to the city commission?
That's correct. They made a recommendation not to support the request. However, that doesn't mean the request stops there, right? So I want to be clear that the reason why that application, the applications are here before you is statutorily were required under Florida statute to follow a very strict, per-scriptive process for any type of comprehensive plan amendment or rezoning. The local planning agencies are first stopped. Their recommendation is a recommendation only to this body. And then this body would make the final decision either for or against the reasons. And co-plant.
Hi, thank you for joining us. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I attended that meeting. I found it to be quite interesting. I made this, I do understand properties and changing zones, rezonies and things like that. But with Lake Helen and our co-plant, I'm not quite sure how everything works. So when I got my packet, I was somewhat surprised. Because as you know, it.
Okay, you're here.
As you know, it ended up with, it just died right there at PL DRC. What happened? What was the process that changed everything after that meeting, which is supposed to come to the board or go to you next?
No. See, what the statute requirements are, and your wind health and food action also lays out the same process, right? So your code is formulated under the Florida statute to 163. And as a result of being formulated, that it has to be, it has to be consistent with the law, right? And so the law for any type of change of a future land use category, which is the map associated with your co-planting, and the zoning requires it to go to the local planning agency. So in this case, that's your PL, your PL DRC. They, they have an opportunity to give, to give comment, to open it to the public for a part of due process. And at the end of the discussion, they make recommendation either for or against. If they do not recommend approval of a project, it doesn't stop there. It still has to come to you for your action. Now, if you choose, you have a couple of different options with your, with your action, right? You can choose to overturn what was done at that meeting. Or you can choose to affirm what was done at that meeting. Or you can choose to provide additional comment and defer the application and send the applicant back to provide that additional comment. Essentially, you can send them back through the process if you feel that that's warranted. If you think that the change, that there's some kind of substantial change that they can do that would change your recommendation, you can provide that feedback to the applicant. And the applicant gets to decide whether they move forward or whether they continue back through the process. So it's a, it's a evolving discussion between the city commission and the applicants and the local planning agency only has, can only do with recommendations. They can't give final comments. That's what's a little bit confusing is, and we're working with the staff to provide a flow chart and things so people can understand statutorily why this is, this is the process. Because I know a lot of people thought after that meeting that things were done. And that's just, that's just not how the Florida statutes are set up. It gives the applicant the opportunity to continue through the process to the actual decision they are switching to. And so you have a process that you have to follow as well, and that's a two-meeting process. Like tonight is what we call first reading. It's the first introduction of, of the ordinances where the titles are read. We give a presentation, we take public comment, and we then take your comment. And then whatever you decide, this will come back again as a second reading. Right? So there's two, there's two lights at the apple at this level, only one light at the apple at the, at the lower pole. Statute forward. Now, this could, this body, because you can make decisions to amend your code, can change your process, but it can't be less, it can't be less restrictive than what's required by state law. You can require more hearings, but you can't require this.
Okay. Just one more question. Rezoning the parcels, there are a question here. Is that going to affect all the other parcels that's on that street or?
It depends, it depends on what you're, what you mean by effect, right? So it's only going to, no, it's only going to physically change this 1.85 acres. That's the only thing that will physically change. When you say impact, there are always impacts from one property to adjacent property, right? There's, so I can't say no, right? Personally, I can't tell you no, there isn't going to be an impact, because there will be an impact. But there will be no physical change to those adjacent. will be an impact, but there will be no physical change to those adjacent properties other than the fact that this property will potentially be subdivided in the future, should you decide that you want to approve the density increase, right? Nothing happens if you decide that you want to affirm what happened at the planning, at the planning board level, nothing's going to change, right? So essentially, if you affirm their decision, you recommend the, the not to change, no, no change. If you go, if you go against their recommendation, then they're basically changing, and you're saying it's okay for this property to change both the future land use category and the zoning category to allow up to three units per...
Okay.
Okay?
And you have everything I've read that needs to be looked at, all kinds of stuff, work that needs to be done, so that was good.
Yeah, you're verbal.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Just to clarify for Commissioner Donato's question, the packet you have before you is the same exact information that went to the meeting, the LDRC. The only change is their recommendation has been added to what's in there, but it is, it's something. So that meeting, it's not like something changed in the documents or different things that were inserted. So you're getting the exact same presentation with the benefit of the LDRC's recommendation.
Well, it looked that way, and the only change was the recommendation from Stan. And then, of course, I was missing two pages.
Oh, okay. So really, there were two, there were two changes. One was the very top header of the page where I added the ordinance numbers, because at the time when we went to the, the commission, we hadn't actually advertised, they, they weren't required to advertise, we didn't advertise so many days before this meeting, not that meeting. So we hadn't done all the advertising, so the ordinance numbers weren't really officially assigned. Again, so that was not what's, what went to their meeting, didn't actually have the ordinance numbers. So the header changed to include the ordinance numbers that the attorney read tonight, and then I included their recommendation and the issues that we, in summary of the issues that were brought up at the meeting, so that you would have that information, so you would be aware of that. Because I wasn't sure if you got the minutes from the meeting as part of these deliberations. If you didn't get the minutes, then you wouldn't know if you had any attendance. I wanted to make sure you had some information.
Yeah, I did, and I did, because that's what I had, I just got this way for this meeting. Also, the applicant is responsible for you appearing and doing this work, or putting everything together, or...
Okay, so, no, sir, no. They do pay for my services, but the city actually has hired us to review the applications on the city's behalf that come from the private sector. So a private individual, when they submitted an application, that application is sent by your city staff to us, and we basically function as if we're city staff to review the application, right? And so we review it based on your regulatory documents, in this case, your comprehensive plan and your land development code. What the applicant's responsibility for that is, is they pay the bill. So they ultimately pay the bill for our services, but our services are actually rendered to the city.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So we're kind of like a third-party reviewer, where we, we are not in part of the application, but we are giving our professional opinions based on the information that's been provided, and it, how it coincides with your, with your particular regulatory documents.
Yeah, I would just hate to see us take two and three bites out of the apple. And the city, the taxpayers paying for this, so that was quite a aspect.
Yeah, so the, and the city taxpayers don't, the way that your, your land development code and your processes is, is those fees that are associated with our review and the advertising, and a lot of the costs are then passed back to the applicant, because they're generating the need for this review.
Okay, thank you.
Can we get a copy of that drawing that's referenced in the letter that she wrote there too? Because I don't have it in my packet. She said they got one that shows the division, as a, as a proposal. Reference in the letter. Want to show some of the vision?
Now, would you, one question. You mentioned the 1.8 acres?
Correct.
And then there, there is a maximum that could be supported by that size lot?
So...
I think the number was six, but...
No, so, add a density, if you have two acres, right, it's harder when you have one...
Less than a...
Anything less than an acre, right? If you have two full acres, and you were to propose, to be looked favorably on the change, up to six units could be placed on that property.
If you have two full acres?
Full acres.
This is less?
Less than two acres.
So that eliminates the six, that's the point?
Correct. It's less than six. And we should, there should have been one in the packet, because they did submit this part of their application background. They didn't get it in there, okay. Well, unfortunately, we don't, I don't have a copy of that, and it wasn't provided. All that's in there are the maps that show your, the property location in relation to the general surrounding area, which is required statutorily for the ordinances. But essentially, what the applicant did provide, which I'm not sure why they did it in the packet, they did provide a blowout that showed essentially how they would theoretically cut up the property. Now, the, the particular site plan that they, or concept, plan, sketch, whatever you want to call it, that they provided, actually provided larger lots than are the minimum that's required by your code. So they were, they're already anticipating the fact that they, they're going to be building somewhat bigger lots, or proposing somewhat bigger lots, because those lots are bigger than what was required by the code, right? So your land development code is a minimum for that proposed zoning district, for the lots that are proposed in that zoning district to be consistent with. But those are minimums, the applicant has every right to ask for, or to provide more. And that's what they were doing, because they recognized that they can't get six, right? So when you break into five lots, you're eventually, you're also getting really, really strange-looking lots when you, when you are a lot size. So they wanted to force their lot size, so the lot size wasn't quite half an acre, it wasn't quite, wasn't quite three quarters of an acre, it was less than, than that, but it was only four lots that they were showing. That doesn't mean that they're bound by that. They can ask for, if you give them the entitlement for the zoning and the, and the future land use, they can go up to whatever the maximum density is that's there. The problem is, without two acres, they're not getting six units. It's, it's something less than six, right? So it's going to have to be, it's actually, it's actually right around five and a, and a little bit more, right? Because it's, it's not quite the two acres. What they were showing was just four.
So one of the, one of the options that the city commission has is to prove it or send it back to the planning board for a little bit more discussion?
You can do three different options. You can, you can affirm the decision that was, was, that was recommended by the planning board, which was to not amend.
But did not?
Did not. You can recommend approval of those entitlements, and then that, this ordinance would come back to you for a second reading. Okay, so this is not like, we do it done, we're done tonight, or not. Or you can remand it back, if you feel that there are changes that can be made that would make the application more palatable to this board for approval. But the, the decision cannot be based on, we don't have the site plan, because the site plan is not what's under consideration tonight. All that site plan is a sketch proving that theoretically, the applicant can build or create lots that are consistent with your land development code, provided this change occurs.
Here's my concern. As the city commission, and as was asked briefly before we began, because this is a positive issue, that no one had had any contact with any of the residents or the applicants. And, I'm sorry, today, again?
Heather.
Heather, okay, Heather, you didn't speak to any of the commissioners?
No.
Okay, would that be proper for you to speak to the commissioners, to give us a little bit of understanding? Because we're about to make a decision about something that normally would go to the planning board, and what their decisions are, we would then be able to either accept or usually if we go along with it, if we, if we have to. At this point, there's an option here, three options actually, and I don't feel comfortable making a decision on things that I don't really understand. And you could have given us a little bit more information, a heads up, that'd be, yes?
Mayor, that kind of defeats open and public government.
Uh-huh.
We debate that here in the room. You can have the right to a one-on-one, we can answer any, any questions, but to kind of imply that staff stumbled or something, we're following the process, and you know we can't make decisions behind back rooms. And when you see on the report a staff recommendation, it's not that we sat down and said, okay, hey, I like this, so go ahead and make a recommendation. The recommendation is coming through our planning agency based on the facts of the transitional area, other parcels close to it are zoned and whatever to that level, so I'm, I'm not sure what...
Well, I guess the question that...
What more or what it is?
What I, what I would have liked to have seen is what she just described in writing.
Mayor, let me help you.
Help me out.
Let me help you out. Doing development is like almost building something. There's steps to it, and each step along the way is more and more expensive for the property. So in this particular case, what they want to do, it's not allowed in our co-pleader, based on the designation of their property. So the appropriate first step is to come in and say, can, will you allow us the increased density on this property? Not talking about how it's laid out or anything like that, just, are you willing to allow us to have the increased density on this property? That is the, actually, the only question before you. It's the only question before you tonight. It's not about how they lay it out, because there are some site plans, the property has to be subdivided, and the details will come later, but it's, it's unreasonable and really unrealistic to try to tell our owner to say, before we tell you from a policy standpoint, if we're going to let that density there, go design your own project. Spend all the money without knowing that conceptually we like this idea, from a policy standpoint that we like this increased density. That's unrealistic. You'll never have anybody build anything here, and that may bleed to some people, but you're not going to have any growth, because no developer's going to come in here and expend all that money upfront, when you can make a legislative policy decision and say, nah, I ain't doing it.
Here's my question. The question is that where we are now, we're going to hear from public comments, right? So before we make a decision, public comments will come into this conversation.
Public comments are going to definitely come into the conversation, but...
That's what I'm looking for.
And the public comments need to be focused on what is relevant to your decision tonight.
Okay.
Increasing the density, not how it's laid out or anything like that, you're increasing the density. That's the relevant question before you tonight, and it's a policy decision, you can decide. We don't want to have that many lots there, that's not what we're looking for. That's more than, more comfortable, the majority of you say, we're not looking for that type of density on this piece of property, you have that discretion to do that, and then the developer knows no need reason to go on and do a site plan and a subdivision plan and all the engineering is needed, because from a policy standpoint, this commission doesn't like that.
Okay. Last question. How many lots are they looking to put there since they aren't able to put six?
Okay, so that, once again, would be up to them, should you find favorably here, and we don't know that, we don't know the true answer to that, right?
We do know the answer that they can have no more than five.
Correct.
So you have to assume, and I'm sure they did it for their calculations, when you do, called concurrency. So when somebody comes in and makes these changes, they do, part of what they do is a concurrency analysis to make sure the streets can handle the impact, the water can handle the impact, the garbage can handle the impact, the fire can handle the impact, all that concurrency can handle. We have to assume it's going to be built to the maximum potential density.
Okay.
Five. You tonight need to assume that it will be built to the maximum potential density of five. They may come back before, that's up to them, but if they were to tell you that tonight, we're going to come before, they're not bound by it.
That's clear.
So that, clear on that. How many units can they build right now?
They can build, it's one density there is one unit per, two per, 2.5. So they are already under, well, they're already under what is allowed, technically under their, their...
So they can build one, but they're stuck in, you know, can't tell them they can't build, so they're allowed to build one.
Correct.
So what we're talking about is four more. Naturally, the question tonight is allowing four more units on this property, because they got one, nah, they can build one. They're asking to build up to a maximum five, you have to assume it's a maximum five.
Okay.
Before we start public comments, a quick question. I'm not sure who did directly question two, so please jump in, but I did not understand one of the paragraphs on page 42. It is under the letter C, the paragraph directly under that whole paragraph. It says, "The applicant has provided a narrative to accompany the site plan and demonstrate that the future is exempt from concurrency with public facilities as the increase in density will not degrade the existing level of service for public facilities available in the area." And I believe that to mean the drawing that was discussed earlier, but I'm not 100%.
Okay, give me one, give me, give me the, that section again, which, where was it?
It is on page 42 in the packet for page four.
Over at the top?
Yes, right under the whole paragraph C, the next paragraph, starting with, "The applicant has provided a narrative."
Yeah, so what the applicant provided is a narrative and the site plan to demonstrate, so the narrative along with the site plan demonstrated that they are exempt from specifically that should have been transportation concurrency. They still have to meet all your other public facility concurrency, but because there's so few lots under pollution county standards, they don't trip the threshold for the number of lots to actually require a full traffic study. So they can do what's called a letter of de minimis impact, and that's the, and that's where that should have been, so I apologize, that should have been a little bit clearer.
Thank you.
Mayor, could maybe help a little bit, try to summarize it a little simple for you? As I said, the question for you tonight, is do you want to increase density?
Yeah.
So if you, if you all decide you want to increase density, which is a top line question, honestly, the rezoning is kind of a no-brainer, because you've already made the policy decision to allow the increased density. So the real question is ordinance 24-02, because to prove that, there's nothing to send it back to. There's not another zoning that they can go back to, there's no reason to send it back to planning board for consideration of the zoning. It's not like this was a PEB where we have a site plan attached to it, where they may want to change some things around, it's not, they're requesting straight zoning here. So the real issue is ordinance 24-02. That is a policy decision, y'all need to decide, are you going to go from one unit for every 2.5 acres or 2.25 acres, or you want to make it more dense per their request? That's, that is the key question.
Scott, I have, I have a question for you. This has to do with rezoning, I understand that part, but you keep bringing up co-pleader. Are we setting precedence here, by saying, okay, we're going to change these parcels, and then that means for the rest of the city, someone can come in and...
Every application stands alone on its own before you vote for you. Now, obviously, people can come in and say, it's part of the transition of growth, you know, as Heather indicated, it's transitioning now. So, yeah, it will be part of the transition, but you are not setting the precedent to say, hey, somebody can come in and say, hey, you let them do it, you have to let me do it. It's a policy decision to change the land use, and there may be reasons, for policy reasons, you make a decision tonight, and you may say, no, tonight, and then applicant comes in next door in a month, and you say yes or no. It's a policy decision, you get to make it.
I just don't want to change this out, huh, man, based on one action?
You're, you're not, you're, this only, as Heather indicated, this request tonight only changes the land use and zoning for the property, the 1.5 acres. It does not change anything else, and it doesn't set a precedent that it titles someone else to make the same request.
I think we're trying to lead this around, the fun time to hear from the resident?
The applicant.
Applicant?
Applicant.
Oh, the applicant, where's...
If the applicant would like to speak, it would be appropriate to have them speak before the public.
Please come up and give a mic, and right there... Please come up and give the mic and right there and the dial. Just state your name and your address.
I'm Brooks Donald. This is my wife Christina. I guess the applicant, that's what you would say.
Speak up.
I could just use this one if I hold it really close. Thank you. I'm Brooks Donald, this is my wife Christina. We're the applicants. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm really not sure what I'm supposed to say. This is where I'm breaking away with this. I said I had the PLDRC a couple of weeks ago. First and foremost, I'm very impressed the fact that not only you all said a political agents, because we're both school teachers and we say that every morning, but you say it for her, so thank you. This is our first time doing this. We were just looking to get something. There are people, there are lots right adjacent to us that have the SFR3 and would like to do that. It's interesting, Commissioner Granado. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You asked if there was precedence. Three and a half years ago, 785 West Ohio got the same thing you were asking tonight. So I'm not saying that there was precedence, but that's the same exact thing. They went from SFR1 to SFR3 three and a half years ago. And you can look in the minutes. So yeah, we're just, we're, we're schoolteachers. We're empty masters now. We were just looking to get rezonating. That's it.
You're an empty master? Your building's four houses, maybe mine? Are you going to buy kids' bath? Mine always get back home.
That's, that's, we're in the dark. We have no idea what's going to happen in the future. But that's a possibility, absolutely.
Are you planning on renting the property now or?
We really, truly have no idea. This is our first time ever doing this.
Public comment? Okay. And there is the Zia. That's all. Did you come?
Anna says, I'm one seventy West Craig Avenue. I am a member of the PLDRC. And we met and we issued the application of the, the very lovely couple. We voted against it because to change the comprehensive plan was something we were opposed to. Putting, they presented us four homes in that area, four lots. And it was just too much with that small area. And changing from 2.5, which is the comprehensive plan that this city voted on, this city created and voted on. And to change to four parcels, four homes, it was just too much. It was just too much. We recommended that they come back with variants because 1.85 is not even sufficient for them. So they need to have variants in order to build one house there. They knew what they were buying when they bought it.
Kayla, do you want to run?
Hey, look, Troy, 664 McKinney. I just want to open my notes really quick. I, I did want to echo what the representative from the PLDRC said. You know, the simplest thing to me is we created a comprehensive plan for this reason. It's the framework of how do we preserve Lake Helen and allow for sustainable growth? I would definitely be going backwards to allow this parcel, which is already not conforming for one home, to be completely brought to its limits. I know there's others zoning, there's SFR1 and there's SFR2. I'm not really sure why the applicant went for SFR3. You know, to the attorney's point though, if you deny it today, you know, that would kind of, to me finalize this. But that was a question in my mind was, why go for the maximum zoning in that area? Why not go for, you know? Anyways. The, primarily, that's the point that I wanted to say was, you know, five acres in that area, I, I would have a hard time seeing. Well, there we go. I would like to see maybe where else near. Where else near this? There's SFR3. I'd have a hard time, I drove down there today. I have a hard time seeing even a precedent for that type of zoning in that area. Obviously, there's going to be more people here to speak tonight. But I would urge you to keep the comprehensive plan where it is. And this doesn't seem like a place where we should change it.
Casey? Yelendo?
Maybe turn the speaker so it's not directly against the light. It's getting feedbacked.
Hi, my name is Casey Yelendo. I live at 101 West Ohio Avenue. I literally live right front of the property that they bought out. It, it, it just doesn't make sense to build more than one house on that property. It just does not make sense. There's, we got water issues. We barely even have a sidewalk. The street is not big enough to hold more than one more house. We got people who don't abide by the law already. So if I see our cops every day, 7:00 past by, I can tell you exactly who's standing past by. I'm just saying, I don't need no alarm towards them. I just, I just want them to know. More than one house is unacceptable. It just does not make sense. If you look at the rest of Lake Helen, we've chopped down so much of our greenery. I go for a walk every day. And I see deer, run, ride, run. Why? Why? Because they have nowhere else to go. With everything that's been done to Lake Helen, it's no longer regular Lake Helen. Now we're trying to turn this space into Deltona, Delant, something like that. We keep building and knocking down more of our greenery. We have somewhere else for our animals to go. Nowhere else. I'm walking outside and looking at my yard like, oh my God, okay. We got all, we have a bear. Okay, we have a bear. We got deer in our property now when it was outside of our property. Now they're in our property. You know, and it's just one of those things that it just does not make sense. For Lake Helen to build more houses, especially on that small, I know it sounds like a lot, an acre and a half, two acres. It sounds like a lot, but it's not. It is not. Nowhere near enough to build more than one house. Like, that's all I wanted to say. It just does not make any sense to turn this into something else, another city that everybody is literally moving out of to move into Lake Helen. They could have bought a house that was already there. That's what we all did. We all bought a house that was already there, not to build more.
Thank you. Allison Curtis, promise. Just state your name and your address instead of the mic.
Allison Curtis, 533 Sherman Street. Thank you, good evening. I appreciate your efforts. My main concern is the, is the proposed density will actually equal. The proposed density will actually equal the number of residents on Sherman Street if it's held to its maximum, which would effectively nullify the voter effect of anyone on Sherman Street. This is an area that's populated largely by people who have inherited the property and intend to pass it on to their children. So we have generational connections to these properties in this area. And it is a, that we want to discourage new community members. We definitely appreciate people who want what we have in our little Lake Helen area. But we feel that this would encourage investment much more so than new community members. They're, they're coming here for the small town life and then changing it into a big town. So we would request that you would consider carefully changing the character of this neighborhood of people who have been here for generations and effectively being able, along with the new development on Pennsylvania, effectively being able to nullify any voter influence over future change. And we would end up with another Deltona. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Doris Drayton.
My name is Doris Drayton. I live at 481 Matanzus Street. And this property is right next door. I've been living here for quite a long time. I love my animals that come through, my turkeys, all my deers. I love all my outdoor animals that come through my yard all the time. If you put this property next door to me, I'm just going to take all of that away. And I really would appreciate it if you would. I'm one denied. Thank you.
Iris White.
My name is Iris White. I live at 568 Sherman Street. I get up approximately every morning, around about 5:00 o'clock, to walk my dog. And we, well, I've been here 46 years in the same area. It's animals. I'm watching their footprint from 5:30, 5:00 in the morning. That's a walking, and they, because they don't have anywhere to go. Just, you know, you could just follow the walk. And you've got the deers out this high standing in New York. Or not just deers, other animals, coyotes. Like, I just think, Lake Helen needs to be, especially because I grew up right down that corner. I think it needs to be preserved and not, you know, cutting down, building everywhere. Like, if we cut, cut all the trees and stuff down, I mean, where are the, where are the animals going to go? They're going to go on your porch or maybe just in your house. So I think we just need to, you know, not, not to build up here. We're not, not New York, we're all in one city. It's a small, you know, residential area. And I think it needs to stay with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Weir.
Thank you, Mary Delwerke. I'm going to Nancy tonight to deny this request. And I want to tell you that coincidentally, I attended a seminar this week. And it is very relevant to what we are having happen here in our city. And I encourage each and every one of you to look at Lake Wales in vision, in their visions, and how they have taken their historical Black community and their conservation and their environmentally sensitive areas and their downtown master plan and really done a great job within the past couple of years. And I encourage all of you to, to find out about this, to explore it, and to bring it forward for our community, because this is our community.
Do you have any comments?
Kelly Frasca.
Hello? Kelly Frasca, 616 John Street, here in Lake Helen. I just wanted to, to touch on this subject. Change those precedents as far as how we look at our city as a whole. We had carefully planned in the past what we want our city to become, where we want it to be. And that's within our comprehensive plan. Can you hear me okay? Sorry. So when that comprehensive plan was adopted, we had an idea of what we wanted for the future. I appreciate the conversation. I mean, it's always good to, to look at options. But when it comes to rezoning our, our space and, you know, bringing our homes closer together with, you know, low-density housing, we are changing the footprint of Lake Helen as we know it. And we have been doing this for quite some years. And I just don't understand what has changed so much that we don't want the Lake Helen that we had as far as density and homes? Just Lake Helen as itself? I mean, if we go down, not only, you know, Church Street, we have homes with more property. We have homes that, in my mind, should be deemed historic. There's a lot of historic property back there. There's a lot of historic property amongst throughout our town. But I'm only speaking right now on this particular ordinance. And I would just like to stress that I don't, I don't see why we would, would change something that seems to be working just fine. I do understand, and I understand that, that these properties owners, thank you for coming up today and speaking. I understand this isn't a malicious attempt on our residents or our city. And, but, you know, it's always good to ask questions. And I, but I do ask our commission, please don't change Lake Helen any more than it has been. We all moved here or have stayed here because of the low-density housing. Thank you.
Danielle.
Hi. Danielle Nixchuk, 291 South Upland. I just want to echo what a lot of us have already said, but I'm against changing any type of rezoning or any future use other than a benefit to whoever owns the property and is going to be developing it. There's really not a benefit outside of that for anyone else, especially the people who live here and there and just for our city as a whole. It's just changing our density. It goes against what we plan with our charter. And I think that we should stick to our charter. And I'd like you to please vote against changing any of this zoning. Just let them develop what's allowed with their current use. We don't need to make any special changes for anybody, really. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
June Troy, 421 Roseville Lane in Lake Helen. I am also in support. I'm a real estate agent, and we have a building company. And we're against the growth too. Because it is like everybody said, there's animals involved, that which is part of Lake Helen. We are a tree city, and there's a lot of great wildlife here. And we definitely, I don't think anybody wants the density to increase. So just wanted to support that thought. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes, Ms. Curtis. Come right on up. Okay. Up loud. Say your name and your address.
My name is Zul Bell Cody. And I live at 825 Phillipsville Lane. And I've been living there for 60 years. And I've been outgrowing right here in Lake Helen. And it's never been like this before. But nothing wrong with improving things. But not just that some contract you come in and guess and go to give you a little money. You all accept it and then come in and move in all the other stuff. And it's not fair. Because at 825 Phillipsville Lane, I have a couple, a family. They moved in right in front of me. And nobody been in that spot all my life. I've been right there. But I have no complaints with them because they are organized, bad. And that's what we looking for. We not looking for somebody gonna come in and make trouble for other things. Because that's what you do. They come in, "I'm better than you." And they supposed to take over. So I just hope and pray that you all, you make your decision. Not just that cost of money, but just for people to enjoy life. Because that's what everybody is trying to get out here, to enjoy life. Get away from these big cities. We have no problem with the animals or the animals come to eat up on our town. But it doesn't matter because they got to go somewhere. They got you, but they good for you. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Make sure you decide what you're gonna do and you do it.
Anyone else? Yes. Keep the walk up. Come on up.
My name is Paul Attisfield. I'm at 840 West Big Light Road. I have a question. If we decide to go ahead and approve this, if a person come with one acre and want to build a house, one house, and y'all turn it down, how do you think they would feel? That's the only question I want you to think about. In that same area, if somebody come with one acre and they want to build a house, and y'all get turned down, and y'all approved for them to build three or four houses, you're opening yourself up for a can of worms. So you need to think about it before you make a decision.
Thank you. Everyone's been heard? Anyone else would like to be heard? Well, I guess this is before the commission to either go along with the recommendation of the planning board and to deny it. Or, as the attorney said, those the other two? Scott? Deny it? Prove it? Or send it back to the board?
In theory, you would send it back to the board. But in practicality, I don't know why. I think really the option on board that's 24 dash 02 is you either approve the comprehensive plan change or you deny it.
Right. I got it.
I guess, you know, there is a, I was looking through the comp plan, there is a comprehensive plan change that would allow two units per acre, that would allow them to build three blocks maximum, I think, if I understand it correctly, with each block being a little bit over six tenths of an acre. About, maybe about six tenths of an acre or more. So there is something between where they're currently at and what they're asking for.
Yes. I just wanted to clarify what we're doing here. So the motion was brought before, not the motion, but the planning board's recommendation was brought before to deny. This is the first time we're hearing this. So as this is the first time, we have not made a decision. And it normally would be, if the planning board would have given us the approval or their approval, and then the same process where residents would have to say their say-so, then we would be at where we are right now. I see hand, Cookie. We would be where we are right now to make a decision. So now, Cookie with the last hand up. Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank all the residents from the neighborhood that came out to speak. It's a rarity that we get that much input from the residents as in the area on issues of their neighborhood. And I really appreciate their input.
Cookie.
Okay. Now, the folks at 92 Oak Tree Lane, chairman of the planning board or the LRC, I just want one thing understood here. We, as Vernon just said, which is true, we said no to it the way it was, or the way it's presented, okay? But we also have given them a chance to change, like we were talking about now, with the difference with the, you know, plans and stuff as far as property. So it wasn't that it was completely no on it. We just said that, well, they could probably reduce it, put less on it and stuff. Just, I want you to understand, it wasn't just complete no on it. It was just, let's try to work with them and see if we can get this thing worked out. Thank you.
I make a motion that we deny ordinance 2024-02.
My second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a vote. Discussion.
I'm really in a quandary here. I'm thinking about all of the animals that have been discussed tonight. I wish this had happened maybe a couple of months ago. I feel really bad for this couple that has come up and wanting to build on their property. I personally think that where they're located, there's still a lot of land being reserved. I'm really sorry about this, but I have to listen to my constituents. And I'm sorry.
Can't hear you.
I'm really sorry about this, but I have to listen to my constituents and what they want. I'm so sorry because we have other issues going on and this seems so minor to me.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. And anyone opposed? No opposedes? So it's passed.
You really have no choice but to make a motion to deny the second one because now it is inconsistent with our comprehensive plan.
Do you want me to make that?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion that we deny 2024-03.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Discussion none? All in favor? Aye. And opposed? It has been approved. It has been denied, the second 03. Moving right along. We're still in the phase, if anyone wants to leave, without disrupting anything. We're now to the faith group. Administrator, you like this? No movement, anything? Okay, we're now at 331, 331. 331 John Street. Verin? City Administrator?
I was going to point out that a variance is also quasi additional to any ex parte communication.
Thank you for that.
Unvarieds should be disposed of.
Has anyone had any ex parte communication with this applicant?
Or?
Or anyone pertaining to this particular location? 331 John Street? None? None? So have. Did we have any motions on it?
You need to make a presentation.
Presentation? District? Back to you again. Okay.
Okay. So this application is a variance request for a property located at 331 St. John Street. The application is essentially requesting a reduction in the side setback for the storage shed. The storage shed was already placed on the property, so this is a fact of the fact essentially. However, we're in support of this request because the request is a really divisive request. And the owner did not have control over where the shed was placed. It was placed when they were not available. At this time, the additional kind of wrinkle is the distance between the shed and the actual house is meeting the requirement. So like, we want to have a storage shed, which theoretically could have something in it that could be combustible, away from the house sufficient distance. So that's why we would support this, is the impact is minimal on the adjacent property owner because it's a very small amount, less than a foot. So as a result, we would support that revision because they're meeting the distance requirement between the house and the structure. We don't know, you know, people will store gasoline in their sheds and those types of things when they have, you know, equipment and that type of thing. We want that as far away from my house as they possibly can be. So that would be where the city staff is, is we're recommending approval of this request as the fact is a divisive impact. And the property owner, the mitigating issue is the property owner really was not available when the shed was placed. So they kind of didn't know that it was placed in the wrong place until we, as the city, not me, but we as the city, discovered that when we were evaluating your property.
Okay. Discussion. Is the applicant here? Yes, please. Come to the front. Say your name, your mic.
Carl Hart, 331 John Street, Lake Helen.
Mr. Hart, tell us why you're here.
We're requesting the variance because of the, we had a survey done recently. The shed was put in there over three years ago. We just had a survey done on the property less than two months ago. And it showed that the shed was put in at just a slight angle where it's like five inches more than it needed to be and five inches less than 10 feet. So that's what, and to try to move that shed in the position that it's in now, move it five inches would require a lot of, I don't even know what goes into it because it's anchored in to, it was passed, permitted. And so we're looking for a variance to keep the shed where it is. And it is, like I said, it's only five inches over. So it's nine, I think nine feet, seven inches instead of 10 feet from the nearest property line.
How far is it from the house?
It's quite a ways. It's over 12 feet from the house.
Minimum is 10. So yeah, we really don't want to see that.
Put it as far as we could go to keep it from the house.
And again, it's the way the house is. This is like the closest corner, so it is on an angle.
Yeah, the house is like mine, it's still on an angle on the property.
All right. Thank you.
That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Comment? Question? Motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we approve the variance at 331 John Street.
Second.
Motion approved. Motion second. And a vote? All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. Okay. The certificate of appropriate?
Other variants.
What are they?
I believe 659.
I don't have that. Which one is that? Okay. So then, ready, what you want to say? Oh, no, I keep putting him on the spot.
Well, if you really want to, you can. But you know, you have the benefit of me being here, so.
I'm just glad to be here.
All right. So this is a very interesting application. And it really is generated as a result of your land development codes. When somebody wants to subdivide a property in this configuration where there's a lot in front that meets the requirements along the road frontage, but the lot behind doesn't have road frontage, they're required to come before this commission and ask for, or this council, and ask for relief. Because the code requires that every lot in Lake Helen have access, direct access to a right-of-way. So it would have to all both fronts on the public street in order for the lot to be split legally. As a result, the applicant has requested an easement. We provided comments to the applicant that we would like to see the easement be a minimum of 50 foot. That doesn't mean they're gonna have a 50-foot road running through there, right? That means that they have enough right-of-way that if, in fact, in the future, the city had to put a private road into that easement, they would be enough right-of-way to do that. That's why we asked for the 50 foot. There are existing lots in Lake Helen that have reduced easements of like 30 feet. We don't recommend that because your city street requirements are 50 feet. That means when Lake Helen builds a road, your minimum requirement is that road has to be 50 foot wide. Now, that doesn't mean the pavement is 50 foot wide, but the actual right-of-way where the sidewalk theoretically would go, street trees would go. If there's a median, that would go within that right-of-way. And the actual driveways are also part of that right-of-way. That all fits into what's called a road cross section. And that road cross section is the whole width of the road. So that's supposed to fit in the 50 feet. The additional reason we ask for that is because that back lot's gotta be served by a fire truck. And the fire truck is really my concern more than any other emergency vehicle, right? So ambulances have a different turning radius than your fire apparatus. Your fire apparatus has a very specific turning radius. It can be easily turned and reversed. They don't teach the engineers how to back up really well, right? So we don't want them backing up into the lane of traffic without it being on a stabilized surface. So that 50 foot of right-of-way theoretically will provide more than enough turning radius for the fire truck. However, what has not been provided as part of this variance, but will be happening in the next application, which should you approve this variance in this configuration, that lot that's behind? One of the things that I made the applicant aware of is I'm gonna want to see at the time that they actually develop, whatever's gonna go back there. Whatever type of house, whatever they're proposing. I'm going to request that I want to see, and I want the fire marshal to approve, whatever turning radius they're gonna have for the fire truck. Because the fire truck needs to be able to reverse direction. Because the fire truck needs to be able to reverse direction. And they don't reverse direction by backing out any type of easement. That's just not, that's just not, from a safety perspective, a good, a good way of doing this. So, that is why we are, we've recommended approval on this application. I actually asked them to put in this application because I can't support a lot split, which is an administrative process, right? To just put two lots, it's an administrative review process here in Lake Helen. I can't support that on an easement. The only way I can support that is if the variance is granted to that requirement that the back lot actually accesses directly onto a roadway. So, you understand that this meets all of the requirements of the zoning. So, this is not an issue like we were talking about with density. They have rights to split the lot. The problem that they have in this particular situation is the frontage along the roadway is not sufficient to support two lots. That's why they're requesting the easement. Is that clear?
Thank you.
Okay. Is the applicant present?
I have a question. Is this new development? Is this, is this the new house that's going?
Yeah, so the house theoretically, if you were to approve this, behind it, there would be a new house. Theoretically. Right? There's other steps to get there, but...
Okay, one. One comment is, being a retired firefighter, I do not appreciate putting down firefighters in our...
No.
We go through a lot of training on how to back up a fire truck.
But, sorry, but the fire code really doesn't support, you guys happen to do that, right?
It takes two guys and everything else.
Yeah, it doesn't support that, not when we have more than enough sufficient land to provide a returning area. Now, this will have to be a cul-de-sac, but it's got to be a stabilized service that's going to take that truck weight.
My question is, on the right-of-way that's proposed, how far is that from the existing house on the front lot? Is that still going to meet the distance requirements for the property owner?
Yes. So, the easement, the easement that's required, that easement still is theoretically part of that lot, so it allows for that distance requirement. It's not separate from the easement because the easement is not a roadway. If they were establishing a roadway and required to do a full, what's called subdivision, and go through that process, we'd be having a different conversation. But because this is an exemption to the platting requirements, the lot split that theoretically brought all this, this up, they are not required, because it's an easement itself, the land is not going away to a different use. It's just theoretically going to be used for ingress, egress to that rear house. And I did make the applicant aware that if they decide to do more than one lot split, they got to do a full subdivision, which is not going to be financially feasible for this configuration. Like, they can't get, take this and convert it into a roadway. But I want the city to have the option, should you need to down the road, be able to put a physical road there if you needed it, right? Because we don't know what's going to happen in the future, but they cannot get more than one split off this. And the applicant was made aware of that actually at the public hearing, because that was the first conversation I had with them.
Okay. I know if you folks in the back know that this is the Loretta Williams property, right next to, or it used to be Lorenzo's property. It goes all the way back to two and a half acres, and this is what we're discussing here. Got a lot of legal ease, but just to bring it into clarification, because you guys have been here a lot longer than this property. So, we're talking about Lorenzo's property that they're, that they sold. And they, they're building up the house, they've already done the house, but now they want to split off the back of the lot. I felt that I just wanted to give respect to the folks who know this property by name and not just a piece of paper. So, that's, that's the application that they're putting you forward.
Mayor, I can't remember if you did it, but did you ask for the ex parte communication on this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I just happen to live across the street from it, so that's fine.
That's okay.
Any other questions? Any comment?
I have a question, but I don't know if anyone's going to know exactly what I'm talking about. But the way that I'm understanding this drive and the conversation is that this is going to mimic Stephanie Lane, which is off of Ohio. So, there'd be a driveway that goes between two other properties to get behind the house in the front, correct?
Well, the lot in the front, yes. So, like, that easement is going to allow more direct access to a back lot, but it can only be one lot. Like, that's it. It's, it's, it's one and done when this is what hap, when this happens.
So, you're driving through the front to get to the back, correct?
Okay.
Kind of like off the side.
Okay, any comment? Motion? Any more public comment on this particular item? Would you? I know you gave me your name, would you give it to me again?
While you're walking up, I have one more quick question. Did this go before the yard?
Yes.
And was there a recommendation?
Recommendation for approval of this one, yeah. Both the variances are recommendations on approval.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I really had to clarify what I asked. Allison Curtis at 533 Sherman Street.
Right.
And a clarification, is this the property next to the church on Ohio Street?
Yes.
And is, is the easement going to be to the west of the house or to the east? Because if it's to the west, it's going to require a little bit more greenery removal, which is one of our comments. I don't object to it, but perhaps they should.
On the west side.
It's on the west side of the house?
Yes.
I just, I was curious as to if it would affect our wildlife or along there?
Well, to be honest with you, when the property was first purchased, they did pretty much clear out a lot that you could see the back, you could see before. So, anything else beyond, I don't think there's much more they could have done than that, than...
Thank you, I was curious.
Okay. Any other question? Comments? No comments, discussion, or motion?
Motion.
Motion?
Feel good.
Motion to approve, the second?
I'll second.
Motion approved by Mr. Natus, second by Mr. Russage. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections? There are none, so, so is approved. I will now get to bank pros. This is still a quasi-institutional. You have what?
You have a police vehicle? I don't know. This paper suffer from the Lake Helen Department because it was mixed in with that.
It was tabled, so that's a huge...
Yeah.
It's tabled, yes. Next one would be the... All right, acquisition of police vehicle. Anybody speaking on this one?
Mayor, I'm going to paraphrase you. Chief had a personal map, so he's not here tonight, so I can give him a dress on that. I think what he was pointing out is that when the budget was approved, I think the vehicle, if I'm wrong, I'll get corrected, but I think it was approved at $45,000. And when, went out based on the state contract and the purchasing price, coming back at over $50,000, $50,806. So, there's, I think it was an increase of over $5,000 in terms of what's budgeted. How they do the vehicles, I mean, it is leased, so it would increase the lease payment. And so, I think the aspect is that to approve it, not to exceed, I would say $51,000. It's got $50,806. Anything above that, would have to come back to you.
Do you...
I'm trying to explain a little bit better from my end. Apologize for his absence, but with... He's tied up beyond the way you control. So, back to before, as you guys know, that was talked about a long time ago about bringing it and putting it into a budget for bars for the police department. Instead of the city being hit with a large sum, or we don't have that money, and saying, hey, we have three broken bars. We did replace four of them. We still have some that are, a few that are older, we've had, people still share them. We acquired about eight trucks. Right now, the F-150s are the cheapest thing to go buy, or Durangos went up to $56,000, I believe, is the run price. Then she checked into Enterprise, because that's where a lot of people are going to. Enterprise would not accept the city of Lake Helen, because they said we do not have enough vehicles for them to do an account. So, after six months going back and forth, I was kind of interrupted at the moment from last he heard. So, he contacted Bancorp, Bancorp is currently the ones who do our Durangos for the five-year lease on them. He was looking at acquiring two vehicles, it would be a total sum of $100,000 over a five-year period. Part of the lease is, is that it's just like the lease on the Durangos where it's paid once a year. I believe that our current budget right now is already approved at $40,000 for a vehicle. So, that would be $40,000 of the $100, that's already with the basic side for vehicles. The part I don't know, because I didn't get the answer from, to talk to him since he was on the back, because I knew there's an option to, to have with Enterprise is that actually taking the vehicles and selling them for us, then us trying to auction them at a small auction and actually getting the going rates towards us replacing them five years to keep the fleet newer than us getting to the point that we're dumping $3,000, $5,000 on a vehicle, you know, each a year. And that was our problem, we have the Crown Vics that we're trying to complete, is that they just, I think it's just more expensive. How to get us as they get older.
Did you mention about the lease? Was there, was there a program where we would have the lease, and at the end of the lease, you'd keep the car?
Yes, I know there was, there was a couple of options. He was going with this option to bring it for you guys this month, was more or less to keep the ball rolling with, to get the roll, ball rolling with Bancorp, because obviously every department now is looking for vehicles. And with the shortage that's been going on, it's just extends time. They go like four to six months out.
I think six months.
Yeah. So, that's why he bought it this month, so he can talk to Bancorp with it. Obviously, if there was a change in going rate of price, he could go for it. What, the current deal we do on Durangos is the Durangos are leased for five years. At the end of five years, it's be $5,000 in revenue. So, it's not like a residential lease, this is a government lease, and this is also government contracting. So, this is state bid price that the Ford gives to the state of Florida for all departments. But it's not like a regular lease, like if you were to lease a car where they charge you for mileage, this, this, and this, we can buy the car for a dollar at the end, and we, we, there is no, like, fees, taxes, you know, anything added on to it. It's just basically, it's a, they're a way to give the government a loan for five years.
We already have the car?
I'm sorry?
We already have the car?
No, these are two new cars.
Okay, because I saw a new car with lights on, that's not us.
Which one?
I think Scott was driving.
We have four Durangos.
Okay.
That we purchased in 2000 and...
No, this, this didn't have any markings on it.
No, that's an old Dodge, I think one of them.
Uh, okay.
Oh, yeah, it wasn't, that's not ours.
Not ours, okay.
Official vehicle, one ARZ either, that's, that's Mark's.
Okay, so, so right now, this is... This is the one?
Two.
We were just handed this, so forgive us.
The paper, I believe, is what he got, because this was the price he given to Ford per vehicle. Because he was trying to get what he could get from Bancorp to bring it to you guys tonight, and then his plan was clear.
So, let me get, we're looking at one or two cars?
Two.
Two cars. And this price?
Yes, sir.
At $998 a month? For 60 months? And then at the end of the day, is that that five-year, $1 at the end? So, we're...
Yes, I believe it's a $1 at the end of the...
At the end of the 60 months, okay.
And one of the reasons why he's going for the two now is because obviously when we bought the Durangos, we bought the Durangos for $42,000, I believe, $41,000? And they're $46,000 right now. So, it was kind of on him to like jump on board, because the price is just going up, 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 and up to start with the two, and that would put us replacing pretty much all the older vehicles in the department and giving the one officers a one car time getting overused and worn out. It's premature.
Do you give the vehicles tuned up, oil changed, and oil max every couple of months, or is somebody buying?
Yes, so, the, the good part of it is when we do it this way is that there are the warranty to the, to the manufacturer. All the maintenance is done between with Public Works. So, they do all of our oil changes to make sure that they're up to date. We do them in-house to save on that part bit, because the cost was going up on as far as our oil changes. We set up usually with Ricky and Sherrod, we bring the vehicles over and they do pretty much all of them within a day or two.
Do you have any idea what the mileage is on the vehicles that you have?
Currently?
Right.
So, currently, we are, will be three years this October that we'll have those. And I believe we're around $15,000 on each.
That's not bad.
No.
They're not trying to replace the truck ahead, I know. Yeah, I know.
But a beneficial to that is with us doing it, with this program, and the part that he was going to look into, from what I understand, is the reselling. So, we sell them for $25,000, we can buy them for $25,000. One of the positive things that we did look into with even Enterprise is that because we don't do as much mileage like the county, which goes like 60,000 miles a year, basically their cars aren't worth nothing at the end. So, that's where the five-year thing comes beneficial for us, because we don't do that.
So, then what we'll have to do is look at whenever you purchase them, that's going to go, it's the variance we're going for this year, and then next year, whatever payments you're making, you will go with that.
And I believe part of the thing he was trying to look at with the $40,000 is that the... I think the annual payments for each was $11,300. So, what I understood, it was like $23,000, which there was already budgeted for this year, it was $40,000. So, if he was going to use the $23,000, that was already budgeted, that was put aside to buy cars. Did you go into the lease program? And then he could use partial money to outfit them. And the ideal with outfitting is to finally, hopefully, we're looking at aspects of finding a new set that can switch from these trucks to buying the same trucks and just switch the street over.
So, by do, by doing it now, we're not going to go over the budget this year?
This year, no, there should be, from what I understand, and from what I...
I realize, but honestly... Okay. All right, I'm just, I just want to know, because I'm really budget conscious, right?
No, I understand, I'm trying to do my best, because we talked on and off through the last eight months about this.
There's a good likelihood that it wouldn't come in until this year, '24, '25. And also, to make sure that we're correct, the lease payment of the 98871 is one vehicle. Is one vehicle. You times that by 60, it's $59,322.60, so that would not be the cost of two vehicles. So, lease on that, so that's, that price of the year, that's lease of one vehicle.
Oh, yeah, correct, that's, yeah, that's where I doubled it to.
You touched a little bit on my question, but I just wanted to clarify a little bit further. So, this, these vehicles are not already outfitted to the needs of the police department? You would need to, for a lack of real terminology, supplement?
Correct, so they, so they come as a, as a vehicle. Even the Durangos, when we bought the Durangos, had the outfit. Ford only makes them to a certain amount. I'm not sure if the regular ones are the used thing, these are police-grade. So, they're police-grade trucks, they're made to be outfitted, but they would take lights, cages, and sirens, basically, to put them on. So they're police grade trucks, they're made to be outfitted, but they would take lights, cages, and sirens, basically, as what they're going on.
And do you know approximately how much that's going to add to the dollar, the bottom dollar on this? Do you have like a ballpark? Is it five, ten thousand? No? Okay.
I don't have a rough estimate, because at the time, we were trying to figure out what vehicle we can even get. It's very hard to outfit something when you don't know what vehicle you're outfitting. And there are certain vehicles, and this was one of the problems with picking a certain vehicle, is that there's some companies like Wheeling that doesn't want to mess with, like Wheeling does not mess with Dodge Durangos. The life packages that we do have in Dodge Durangos are kind of a lower grade company. We've had issues with them, so it was kind of the look into a part. I partially started looking up into Wheeling, but I'm trying to get ahold of their state bid location to buy a hundred, use the state bid twice and not go through like a local, just a local person and paying like a full dollar. I would assume that, my honest feeling, you're looking at probably at least probably three brands for life set up. Cages between about a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars.
So we're around five so far? Okay.
Roughly, I would say, I would say probably within that.
Okay.
Obviously, if you're going to get a cheaper, if I gave this all month.
Understood, thank you.
All discussions, any motion?
And you want to make sure the rights don't end up with the same problem that the Fords had would cause the people to pass out from carbon monoxide fluid.
What are the installs?
Yeah.
Well, we're looking into the possibility that, I don't know if I just talked about this part out there, but I have talked to the chief of, we're looking in the possibility of having them outfitted, or even the price difference of outfitting them ourselves to... They tore up the Durangos.
The whole issue is where they hooked the holes to run the wires. They didn't seal the holes properly.
They also have three hundred Durangos out there that they drilled a hole for the cage to go in, and drilled right through the fuel line.
So that'd take mine a few weeks, that's a big...
Could we table this, please, for your car?
Yeah. I'm going to recommend that. I know they would like to get these ordered tomorrow, but I think it's worth opening back the chief to be able to be here and go into further detail, so we know exactly what the packages are in terms of the cost. And the other thing I'm going to tell you, and this is bad on me, we set a deadline, and when something can be on the agenda, and I allow this to be placed on after the deadline, this is the reason we won't do that again, because this information needs to be out there available. I didn't even have it in my package. So my recommendation is let's table this to bring it back to you and make.
Is it something that we need to vote on, since it's already been allocated, and the budget is within the budget concept?
It's got to be, yes.
Based on the purchase, yes. Because his purchase authority only goes up so high. We already approved.
We talked to you.
This is only twenty-three.
So the chief says three to four thousand to bid then? Is what he came up with? I have that question. So, this was like a last minute thing, I just kind of came up, because it was on the table, and I was trying to do my best.
And I appreciate that, but this, I don't want you voting on something without being a hundred percent comfortable on the total price and the total impact both on the twenty-three, twenty-four budget and the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, and rather than just voting on it. All right?
So you're suggesting that we put this off until next month?
Yes.
What second, there was a timeline on?
It may push the ordering back a month, but we're at six months now. So the vehicle maybe is in October, so it pushes to November. You know, I understand he wants to keep the fleet fresh and go through that process, but I don't believe one month delay on this is going to have an impact on operations or on the asset.
Any other comments?
Yes, I have one more, one more comment or question. The quote here was three twenty-seven. Is this quote going for a certain amount of time, the pricing? Does it stand for another thirty days, or will we have to be defoated? Because if it changes, I'm wondering if that price point will change.
So I do, what I do know from the past and from the dealings that have been going on and talk with the chief, that part of the thing with him bringing this forward of tonight is kind of like, they don't want to deal with you unless you have something kind of going forward, because we're basically, we're like your sixteen-year-old child going to go shop at car, and they say, well, where's mom? And we're like, oh, mom's not here. So I know that was part of it. I can try and get the answer for you really quick. What was the, you said three twenty-six?
Three, it says three twenty-seven revised quote date on the top.
If us to land a month, it's still going to be within the quote allowance time.
It says if the comments close, subject to factory order exceptions for thirty days.
For thirty days, right at the bottom, right? But I'm wondering if...
I object, so? I've been trying to get the dump truck to forward also, and they don't guarantee the price for so many days, and if even on that, it says could be changed by manufacturer and everything, so. It does make a difference in some ways, because they do, at least on that, we're not going to stay there on the dump truck. They have all kinds of stipulations now, and everything they add to it, and all that. The longer you wait, the longer and more drawn out, and more things can happen. It really does, takes a long time. I do know that the, I'm not fighting against Jim's preservation, you don't mind, I'm just trying to put what I know. I do know that we had this situation with, with him trying to go forward with this was also that the Durangos went from like fifty to fifty-six thousand dollars since we started looking. Because Ford just comes, well, they had the big thing, and then they said, we need more money, we got to pay them money, you're going to pay it. So...
So do we save money and move ahead, or just hold on time to make a decision against that? That's the question?
I personally don't feel comfortable voting on this tonight, I need more information.
Let's look at it this way.
Mine, I would say table it, but that's just me.
Well, look at it this way. Do we have a motion? We don't have a motion?
I'm making a motion to table it.
Motion to table it. We have a second? Motion to table it, second, or to table? I'll go one, or it's to table it, John?
Appreciate it.
It's motion second, and then it's table, right?
Yeah.
Do that.
Because I didn't know.
Oh, that, so you were...
I don't think I need to, right?
I don't have one chart in front of me, but that sounds a little right.
Yeah. Yeah. No. You?
The L thing.
Yeah, gee, we have it, it's now...
Yeah. We have paperwork on that?
No.
Okay.
I do.
Thank you, Roger, I'll give it to you, Mel. So we'll do a break first? Okay, can we have a five-minute break, so we can have a breather? It's five minutes to nine. Ten minutes after nine, we should be back.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Now we have to be... So Mike said it's hard to pick out other family? Okay. It's hard, that's fine. He'll tell me, Joe, he'll tell me at seven-thirty when I go in, because I come in at seven-thirty, and he'll keep me back at like five thirty, five o'clock, so he'll just send you the numbers, and I just go. He just told me to do it right first. Like, what are you always saying? Yeah, because that's... Yeah, well, that one, that one was... Not here, so I guess my question about did take it about my... So you're going to see the application. That's what I needed, because I was responsible for the application fee, because that's what I did. Well, that was weird, because the thing about that was it was bad, like, it's weird. You're going to have a parent, you're going to want a Jeff like that. There are only six fights, and then those Jeffs will be on. You told me.
I just saw that mouth, dude.
All right, folks, we're back. The next thing up was the animal control. Please come up here.
June Troy, four twenty-one, Roseville, Lake Helen. So I wanted to request that Lake Helen adopt the more current ordinance and be the same as Volusia County. I don't think we've probably addressed our animal control ordinance, our cruelty ordinance. I don't know when was the last time, it's been a long time. In June of twenty twenty-two, Volusia County adopted an anti-tethering ordinance. Tethering, I'm sure everybody probably knows what that is, but tying an animal to a tree, or cord, or stake with heavy chains, or line, or rope, and being left unintended. There are some animals that are that way twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Freezing, lightning, whatever the weather is, they're out there chained up to a tree or a stake. Because we have not adopted the anti-tethering ordinance, which Volusia County now has, and... and six of our surrounding cities have also adopted the ordinance. I just think we need to come up to date with it. And I don't really know how you do it, but this is the start, I guess, to simply. Actually, Volusia County said they have a program where any of the surrounding cities, and I think there's eight of them so far, that have um joined this program where Volusia County would even do animal control for us. They'll work with them, right?
Or we mutually with them.
Right, are we now? Okay, so we just are lacking this most current ordinance to prevent the cruelty and the danger of having animals chained up all the time. They don't allow it anymore, and the other cities around us, most all of them do not. I sent emails to you guys and it was in the emails. I would have to check my notes, I think it's Deltona, DeLand, DeBerry. I'm not Pearson, um, I'm not sure about Orange City, I'd have to look. But I think we just need to address it. I'm sure we've had all these other things going on with floodwater and buildings and all that, but the animal ordinance hopefully can be updated so we can comply with them on that issue. Now, one of their new, in addition to the anti tethering, they also had a couple other things that they updated that maybe we would want to look at. One of them had to do with declawing cats, it's not allowed anymore. And um, one of them had to do with um pet sales or something. I have, I really didn't spend a lot of time on that because my main concern was this loophole that we need to close. Pretty much it.
After getting her multiple emails, I did do some research on it. Lake Helen's tethering rules are one sentence, and it allows all sorts of tethering and chaining and cable. Volusia County's tethering ordinance against it is one and a half pages. So it's quite a bit more in-depth than ours is. So I don't know, Russell, the commission won't discuss it now, can I go ahead and make my motion? I make a motion that we change ordinance twenty-four dash oh four dash zero zero D three B and remove that section and add in and adopt the Volusia County's section fourteen dash thirty-nine tethering.
People do have to come back for an ordinance. Can't you do that tonight? You're really just directing the staff to bring back an ordinance to accomplish that.
Okay, if we can do that, if the commission agrees with that.
That puts us all in motion that once they, once the, I'm sure with, does this also, well Scott, I may be getting out ahead of the game. Um, animal control, um code enforcement, that would also be folded into this ordinance in terms of enforcement.
Yeah, our animal control act actually is enforced through code enforcement already, so this would be just a new regulation.
That's another regulation.
And what was that regulation?
Section.
Fourteen dash thirty-nine.
What, I know of the cities.
Oh, Volusia County.
Or how about the cities?
Ours, twenty-four dash oh four dash zero zero.
Okay, duty of animal.
Point zero zero.
You can bring that back.
All right. Thank you, it's in motion.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Kelly Prescott?
So can I just say, if you have any questions, you want me to do some more legwork or find things for you, just somebody email me, I'll be more than happy to do it, you know, the exact.
We're gonna, we're paying him to do it.
Hopefully you'll have them ready for next month.
Okay, good, thank you.
Kelly Prescott, six one six John Street. As you may know, I, I went ahead and had a blessing from the commission to redo our ordinance in twenty twenty. It was, we started and I believe we had the final motion in twenty twenty-one. Tethering was, can you hear me okay? Tethering was one of the subjects that we visited and we got a lot of pushback on the tethering. Personally, I think it's great. I sit on the animal board for the county and I think our, I think that what we have with the county is very, very conducive to what we would need. Quite often you do see animals, not only in Lake Helen, but throughout the county that are tethered, and it seems quite inhumane, so that's why the county went ahead and, and did that one. The section in the county, I think you just said it Roger, was section fourteen dash thirty-nine, and that's tethering. And under ours, we could easily add that in, um, just as we, and even as a precaution, we could even add in that we adopt some of the county's ordinances that, that are out there. And just as we have the ordinances in our, that what we added in is very clearly stating that ordinance up the Florida statute for neglect and under a dangerous dog. So right now, the only tethering that is required underneath our city ordinance for animals is under dangerous dog. They remain tethered and muscled, so I think that is a great option to add in. I'm very happy to hear that we're advancing, thank you.
That is, we said we, the attorney's gonna look into it, we'll have a better way of looking forward. Thank you. Now we're into the quasi judicial hearing. Your head. Yeah. Are there any ex parte communications with anyone on this particular item? We have one twenty-one North High Street for new rules, six thirty-seven Macy's Street for new additions. Anyone had any conversations? None, none behind. Okay. Scott, if you wanted, get the.
Certificate of appropriateness.
Right, can we do this? Yeah, okay. We're at the certificate of appropriateness.
Okay.
We already asked this no ex parte. Any motions?
We usually do it as a consent agenda, almost like consent.
Consent agenda.
One motion.
Because we have two. We have two of them.
Yeah, yeah, a motion of appropriate consent agenda.
Okay. All right, so we have the one twenty-four North High Street and the six thirty-seven Macy Avenue. Any motions?
Well, I just got one comment before we get to the motion. Is the, the represent, was it William Chase from the Macy Avenue property, is he here?
I am, but I'm not here, self-aware.
You sure you want to put the shed in that close to that street and that area floods?
Yeah, I mean, the property's pretty, you know, that's why the house, why we haven't moved it up anyway, so yeah. As you've seen, that, that shed is up pretty high right now, so. It's a shed. We don't want to get rid of it, it's the only storage there.
I, I make a motion, we accept certificate of preference for one twenty-four North High Street and six thirty-seven Macy.
Motion, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Danana, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. All in favor? And so move, and so pass. The next one is uh Jeremy Davidson. It's an application, volunteer application, Roger, you want that?
Yeah, this is a part of the TPO board and I don't know, is Jeremy here tonight? I need to find out from him if he really wants on this board because this one's already staffed by Patrick McAlister. And I know Patrick hasn't removed himself unless the city serves someone else.
Do they have alternates?
No, they wouldn't. They're talking about adding alternates, but I don't know if they've approved that concept.
I think that was a recommendation for us, Stephen, to have an alternate.
Yeah, I don't know if the TPO board is going with alternate yet, I know they're supposed to be discussing it on their executive committee to allow alternates in case the primary can't make it, the alternate could vote in place.
Would you follow along for us? So what do you want to do with this? You're saying that there's already someone in that position?
I would like to find out on that because there's also an opening for the CAC, the Citizens Committee. And that does a lot of sidewalks and streets and public safety charges.
Well, uh, you'd like to follow up on that? Roger? Okay, so do we table this until next month? Is there a motion? Table?
I make a motion to table this until next month.
Motion? Second? Approve, all in favor? So move. Workshops? Yep, fire, uh, fire. What would you like fireworks?
Yeah, uh, Mayor Council, uh, the city had a, a contract of the last five years with the Four Seasons display at DeLeon Springs that did fireworks show. That contract was seven thousand five hundred dollars, um, and I think the shows were eighteen to twenty-two minutes. In requesting, um, the new contract, um, going forward, the price for an eighteen to twenty-two minute show has gone from seven thousand five hundred to nineteen thousand five hundred. The company has stated that they can do a seventy-five hundred dollar contract, but that would give you a seven, eight minute show. And that is, um, approximately a thousand dollar per minute to do a show. So, um, the contract they're recommending is another multi-year contract because in twenty-six and twenty-seven, Fourth of July falls on Saturday and Sunday. And when they state this historically, um, they have not been able, or there's not been enough pyrotechnics, equipment and products available when the holidays fall on weekends, there seems to be more of a demand than maybe when it's midweek. But you all have only budgeted ten thousand dollars for this year, for the show. Yeah. I'm not signing a contract that you all don't authorize for involving that level of increase. And. Part of that budget amendment also. Well, either budget amendment or as we go through it, you know.
It's over any budget for seventy-five hundred dollars, right?
Ten thousand.
No, so we are budgeted in our, what is the budget for that?
Current budget is ten thousand dollars.
So we'd have to add an additional nine thousand five hundred dollars to accommodate this? And since you said it's below ten thousand, because it's below ten thousand? You said something about because it's below.
No, I'm saying I think I'm not signing a five-year contract.
Definitely.
City for nineteen thousand five hundred without you all knowing.
Right. Just for clarity, because, um, this was on Lee Everett's table, I'm not mistaken, the former city administrator, that this came before him, because this, this is dated February, the letter that we have from the company, this date is February, February fourteenth, so Lee had already left, but was this presented to him?
Well, actually, Mayor, the, the letter was sent to you.
February thirteenth, fourteenth.
Dated February fourteenth, um, when the item, um, we were requested documentation from them to bring it forward. I don't, there's no fault, you had a five-year contract, that five-year contract expired.
Right.
So the company is saying in order to renew the contract, they've stated in their cover letter that they've been losing money in the last couple of years, seventy-five hundred, so, you know, I'm not here to defend or, or not Lee, but this, it's not, this is not something that Lee did.
No.
Caused the contract to go from seventy-five hundred to nineteen five. See, we, in our business, we can all take responsibility for mistakes or something, but this didn't jump because he didn't sign a contract. It is what it is, the price, the price went up.
The, the only reason I bring this up is the rumor gets out before the truth does. That's what I got hit with, so I just wanted to make sure that we have no, uh, no, there was, there is no conflict. And just to clarify, because that's, that's what we're saying, is that this contract has now jumped to nineteen thousand dollars, so it's up to the board to make a decision about how we want to progress with this.
Yes, sir.
I've got a question. How much does the market in the park bring in?
We looked at that number, I'm gonna go off the top, but I, I don't think it covers the nineteen five.
Well, I know it don't cover nineteen five, if I go by what Karen says, she says about fourteen thousand a year. Typically, that's where the money comes from, the pay for the fireworks in the past. So that's why I was wondering how much was up bringing in, if it had gone up or down or what.
I think that number is fairly accurate based on the last time, I think the question I was asked. I can get that verified tomorrow in terms of.
So that's, if that money is being used for the fireworks, then that just leaves us adjusting the budget to five thousand five hundred above that to deal with the pandemic.
In, in theory, yes, but in principle, you, you, the revenue and the expenses are two separate.
Yeah, the revenue goes into the general accounts.
In terms of that, so, so, so yeah, you don't have a system right now where that money specifically goes into a line item, like in, in taxi or something, it can only be spent on.
It goes into the general.
So you don't have, yeah, so you.
We still have to approve for the, the whole increase, but I'm just pointing out where some of the money's been coming from.
Question. We did put a line item for a event coordinator, sixty thousand dollars. Don't think anybody's supposed to hire anybody at that amount. Could we possibly use some of that money from that event coordinator designated to add to the pool, able to get past this point and then maybe look further down the road? Because this is kind of like, they're already preparing for the Fourth of July and we don't make a decision to get an eight-minute, an eight-minute, um, firework as opposed to a full firework. Is there some other way that we can maybe manipulate what we have already allocated? That does not have a, a, um, a job for or.
That's a policy decision that you have the right to make in reference to the current budget of reallocation, if you want to use that term. So that's, it's not for me to say yes or no, I mean, you guys control the purse strings. I guess the question is though, is that would, that would get you to one year? So this is a multi-year contract, so the question there is, I mean, is, is, do we go back and, or, and is it a one-year contract? And then we're just worried about this year and then?
Well, I would think that because of the lateness of the hour, because of the urgency, I would think that if we made this a, a decision out of money that we're, that we've already allocated for, which we do not have anything for, that when we do make up the contract, somewhere within the contract, we're gonna make allowances for the fact that prices have gone up, we've had the same price for the last five years, so we can get past this particular junction. Because the only reason I'm saying is because the fireworks is pretty much the hallmark of the, of the holiday. And we're known for the fireworks, so rather than twisting ourselves into a pretzel, if we took that money out and, um, if even if we, because that money is already allocated for a, um, a event coordinator, even if we hired one or, if we advertised to hire one, where still that money is not even, half the year is already gone. Yes?
Even if you sign a multi-year contract, it doesn't work. You can cancel a contract if you don't budget money for it as long as you cancel the contract up to, before the deposit is due under the contract for the next year. So if we do a multi-year contract, we can do it for this year and you all can say, well, go out and visit, see if you get something better. See if we can do something, staff can get a better deal between now and let's see, the deposit is due um, 60 days before.
60 days before the event?
Before the event. So that would, you know, we got almost.
A month?
We got 10 months.
Oh, for the next year?
For the next year.
Next year, I see.
What I'm saying, if you sign a contract now, we have this, then you all can decide, do you want to stay with them? Do you want to look at options or do you want to incorporate the $19,000 of the new costs into the budget going forward? That's fine, but you have an hour is all we're saying.
Right. Because the other problem that we have, even if we, their issue is because it's the latest of the hour, if we, they don't, they can't hold that space for us to make a decision. If we not going to do it, then we're not going to do it. But if we decide that we're going to do it for this one year, then we have the options to be able to either look for a cheaper place.
Even though it's a multi-year contract, you can cancel it.
We should cancel it, yeah. Because we've had it for five years. I think we've gotten comfortable with it. They might have gotten comfortable with it as well. So I'll open the floor up.
Any discussion? We can take an adjustment for this year and bring it up during the budget hearings to readdress it and find out if we want to go with somebody else or if we stay with the same company and allocate whatever funds would be needed for the following years just for the contract, for a long-term contract. But our immediate thing is to get through this year.
And in the past years, we've had weather events that included us for BEM that have it in the Fourth of July. And what we did was to put it off until we had Christmas display. So I guess New Year. Yeah, so if we have, if we have to make a decision, I think in that contract, it should be a weather provision. There is one? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. When did this contract expire? Last July? So it's just now coming up, the board permission. Has anybody, do we know if anybody from his last administration looked for any quotes or talked to the company that we're currently with?
I don't have any record of that.
In point, point to their answer, their letter here, we've enjoyed having you as a client since 2008. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, send the package.
Mayor?
Who? Oh, there they are.
Okay, let's negotiate.
I saw, I saw this shirt. I didn't, I thought it was somebody else.
Let me go back to Roger's question. I mean, and to Mayor, what you said, later in the year, it doesn't have to be next month. But before the budget year is out, a budget amendment can come back that would take money from the $60,000 and put it into special events, which is a $10,000 line item now, which was earmarked for fireworks. So, but that doesn't have to happen in order for you to make a decision. We just know before we get to the end of September, there could be other budget amendments, you know? So it'd be a time to put them together. We just go something on a list that you do a budget amendment before we get to the end of this year.
Sir, my name is Brad J. Mann. I'm the owner and operator of Four Seasons Display. We're based out of Deleon Springs, Florida. We do approximately 12 Fourth of July displays for this holiday across the state and Jamaica. We are the second largest importer of explosives in the state. We've been around a while. We've been doing shows for 15 years, actually. From that point, we were doing fire contracts. We happened to luck into getting your fire contract, like full COVID. So you got two years where I actually made money. The next three years, I took big losses in every one of your shows. So it wasn't an immediate thing now. Basically, I pulled about $6,000 out of my own pocket to pay for your shows, which is fine. I wasn't one of the people from the back to ask for more money because prices went up. I suffered up. With that being said, the caliber of show that you've always had always kept. You carry that same caliber of show. That's where our price needs to be. Our prices have gone up this route. My shipping costs have gone up 320%. To get a shipping container here from China, where we design our stuff, get it here, it used to be $12,000 to get a shipping container here. That's just for, now it's about $48,000 to $52,000 that we have to pass on. And that's, that's where it comes from. All the costs that go on, everything, our shipping costs are taken. Pearl, everybody go over. As far as signing the contract, making things in place, you are my last municipality, decided to figure out your contract. Everybody else from rotation goes one or two years earlier. So you're the last ones to make sure to get on there. I do have other municipalities that want that fruit, but I've always been the loyal to my previous customers. We took over the show after another fireworks company canceled, right before Fourth of July. We took over that show. We've been here ever since.
I was over in the commission when that happened, so I felt honored.
Right. So I mean, it was, it was the last minute thing and we made it work. And we've also, you know, we've changed locations here in Lake Helen from Lake is limited for back to where we used to do it, around the field, which is fine, but that puts us a little farther away from the downtown arena area around the lake. So caliber of show, I wouldn't want to go any less than caliber of show because we're in Los Alamos. Lake Helen is very unique and the show is, your audience is so broad across the city with all the trees and everything. It's hard to see them with the smaller things that we do. The shows we do for other cities like Fairmont, Houston, a lot of the audiences around the big, huge old place, they don't need the height of Lake Helen. For visibility wise. Happy to answer any other questions.
When I used to watch the fireworks, I used to get up on top of the fire station in Daytona. I could see Sanford, Daytona Beach, Lake Helen, Flushing County, Dealey. So I got to see multiple shows.
Well, I used to come to Lake Helen, I was a kid for fireworks because my family brought me and even as a teenager, I still trekked over here for artists doing this, basically, in my station.
I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Brad.
I'm glad to hear from you and not about you, because if you're not here, then we will be talking about you. But you did, you do bring more of the, I guess, the sense of how long you've been doing this, 15 years. And you have caused our city to become known for our fireworks. And I say, without having seen yours, we appreciate you.
Well, we got a choice between accepting a $19,500 or going with a $35,000 drone display.
Take it easy.
Was there any consideration given to shortening the show or what would that look like? Because if I did, did I ask correctly? Because I'm kind of a numbers girl, that's what I do. It looks like we could probably get around a 12-minute show, which I already know people are going to have a problem with. I'm just, just talking about it. It could be around $10,000 to $13,000. So is that something that maybe could be a gap filler for this year? Maybe 12 minutes is too short, but is there, is there some way we can maybe be in the middle for one year?
We could do anything. My minimums are $10,000 single show for July 1st. Or I would go less than $10,000 for a multi-year contract. My multi-year contracts do a lot of things for me. They give me leverage in China to purchase stuff. They allow me to purchase lots of stuff, I know that, sorry, sold. Right now, I'm sitting on three to five years' worth of material explosive product at the end of the day right now. I have ATF at my house all the time. I get to all sorts of inspections. I deal with a lot of things to hold this much, all of Flushing County Fire Services bill. Of my magazines there. I think we have five or six magazines, explosive magazines in Flushing County, the rest of the other counties. So we can move that price point or duration wherever you want. You're really not paying for the length of the show. You're paying for the fall and how fast you want to go up. The guys doing the show, it's husband life team, now a son is joining on the team. To go from a 10-minute show to a 20-minute show, their pay rate doesn't change. I mean, what's an extra 10 minutes sitting on a job? It doesn't. And they're flat rate paid by the day. So that cost, you're buying the fireworks shows at that price. You just tell me how fast you want to get shoot.
I just think, yeah.
I did have the honor of being your tiney one time out there on the display and you told me to let you know every 20 seconds that you set off a certain size charge.
We're at the point now, your entire show is fired by computer, is designed in my office. I design it, I watch it. I can see how much overlap. I can see everything about the show. So the guys come out, so when they start your show now, they push one button and they sit there. They're there in case of a problem. In case the computer fails, in case the electronic igniter fails, they're the ones to step up and say, this is what needs to happen. They need to do it right now. They need to know everything about it. But your show is designed in my office.
Well, since I've been in Lake Helen, I've watched your show every year. It's been great. Last year was a little shorter and behind, which was somewhat disappointing because I live in 55 and over communities. So every time we get out, it gets set up, you know, with watermelons, vodka and stuff like that. It's all, you know, so I hit the idea of the maybe shooting them at a long, giving a longer interval in between. But I'm not sure if that, I'm looking at, if we go 10 minutes, if we go 12 minutes, we go 15 minutes, we're still looking at $1,000, right?
Pretty good. If I, if I look at the caliber of the show, so right now, we have overlap on shelves. So you should see on the show, for the most part, a shell coming out of the gun. You should see a silver tail running. I design all the shells that have silver tails going up unless they are a shaped shell that's going to give you a bow tie or something fancy like that. I don't like that distraction. But most of them have a silver shell followed up to a break. Usually like they, let's say a 5-inch shell has a five-second hang time. Within that period, you should have another one coming out the gun. So you should, there should always be something in the sky.
So as the vendor, what would you suggest to someone who's in this dilemma now without contract?
What's it?
As the vendor, what would you suggest for our situation? We obviously want to stay with you.
Well, like the mayor said, you're known for your fireworks.
Right.
If you start dropping tie and caliber on it, the bad reviews will come back running. I mean, they're going to say fireworks company sucked this year, whoever you, it's the same going through the last 15 years. I go by, just like everything else, I go by your guidance. So you just tell me how much money you want to spend and how much money you want to last. I can make a contract for anything. I don't have to ask anybody for myself.
I personally think the 10-minute show is wasted time. By the time you get there, like you said, and stand around 10 minutes and it's over. So I would like to keep what we've been used to. Granted, we have to pay more for, we have to pay more for everything we do these days. So, and I tell you right now, people in Lake Helen are going to lose their crap if we don't have our fireworks. So that's just my opinion.
So would you be up to us getting through this year and then working on our budget process comes up and to go on a multi-contract through our budget process?
What would be the single year contract price then? To do what, 18 or was it 85?
19.
19, 55, yeah. Do 19, 5 this year and start the process again next year?
Yeah.
That's fine. You meet my minimums, that's enough.
I think one of the things that we probably are not, probably capitalizing off as a city is that because we bring thousands of people out there that just, we don't have a way that we can capitalize on it by having some vendors that are paying us that can be able to generate the funds. So even if we just had it so that you, I think at one point, we had they had boxes in the grocery store you want to add to the fireworks. That was years ago. To help under, under, cut the costs. So I hear you. I mean, you've really made a compelling point here is that, you know, you got backed up material of all of the fireworks that did not get done in years previous. We could utilize the opportunity to do a, you would say, a multi-year contract would give you a lot more leeway because you know that you're going to have a job in however time and you can use a product that you have and put it on the shelf so it can be used next year and not whether or not you want to. Now, you said something else, I'm just, I'm not wondering, but you say you're probably the biggest fireworks around. There's nobody doing bigger than you.
There are bigger companies than me by all means.
But new.
I'm the second largest importer of explosives in the state. The largest is out of Miami. Most of these other companies that are, not most, a lot of the other companies in the state are purchasing fireworks from me. So even if you got another company to do the show, it would be my fireworks.
They're getting it from you.
I would be getting a cut of the show, I guess. That's why generally, the, if you look at that price point of $1,000 a minute, most companies are charging around $1,500 a minute. So if you talk to a few of the cities, the ones that I'm not doing, that's where their price points are going to be. Talk to Berry, Sanford, Altamont, some of those other municipalities, they're paying $1,500 to $2,500 a minute. With me being an importer, I pass a lot of that savings on to you because by the time someone buys it from me and pays my markup to come do it for you, there's an extra, you know, layer of profit in that contract.
I think you're the primary and the middle man both.
And as I said, it's on, that's why you get that.
And if we don't sign that five-year contract, it could go up next year.
Right. And you lucked out because you signed the fire contract prior to COVID. And you lucked out. It sucked for me for years.
Right.
Well, they also didn't expect people to request the $15 or the $20 an hour paying increase and the cost of a Big Mac going up and then everybody's complaining about the price of a price of a Big Mac. It happens, price went up. So we ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion. I make a motion at least.
Go ahead.
Twenty-two.
Make a motion that we allocate $19,500 for the 2024 fireworks display.
Okay.
You got to sign the contract?
You always sign a contract?
No, I don't want to do that for budget processing.
So your motion is to do a one-year contract for the $19,500 and for that to be the necessary budget and then to fund that and then to bring back a long-term contract during budget time?
Yes.
Let me clarify that. We already know what the number would be for budget, $19,500. So I know that now, so next year we can put that in. So if...
So if you are wanting to delay, then are you asking us to go and shop this price around? Because what I'm getting at is like, we already know what's being offered, so I don't have to guess what that number is, I just know that when I get it exact, if we do a 24 or 25, budget, we're doing 19.5.
You're okay then with a multi-year contract?
I mean, that, you guys, I mean, you're the policy, I mean, in terms there, but after hearing his presentation.
Then I would draw my movie. Just go with yours.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept the offer from the fireworks people to do the five-year contract.
Can you include, without waiving any bidding requirements?
Without waiving, oh, waiving any bidding requirements, only because he's been doing it for a couple of years.
Second.
I have a motion to accept a five-year contract and waive all bidding on this particular event. I have a motion, second. We have big votes, all in favor? Aye, no votes, so thanks, appreciate it.
Let's go get dinner.
Y'all should finally go for mine.
He didn't get my card? I was gonna say we tracked it in, so thank you.
Brad, Matt, that's you, okay. All right.
Kelly Brown for fireworks. She wanted to talk on the fireworks.
Commissioner Workshop Friday. We have, the administrator has been given a number of suggestions for workshops.
Since I am the coordinator.
We have one, two, three, four, five. We have several things that have been asked for workshop, business tax receipts, trade laws, pay gift stations, building maintenance mode, city charter review, city coordination policies, city national sidewalk requirements, bid coordinators, separate tanks. So, Mr. Administrator, you want to give us a?
Yes, Mayor, from the time I first came to your city in December, during the interview process, comments were made at the commission that various items had been asked for workshops and had been addressed. In the previous meeting last month, we had additional items drawn up, so I wrote them all down, and there were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven?
Eight.
Hang on. Eight in the sense that I actually, well, I have seven on the sheet, but I wanted to add special events and special events coordinator, the whole discussion that we went through on that process. So originally, the plan was that we pick an item out and do it before one of our meetings. Well, if we look at eight, that's gonna take us into October, and that's not counting any new items coming back from any future meetings. So what I'm asking is then, to help staff out, is for the commission to prioritize of these eight, what's the first, the second, third, fourth, fifth? And then, if we can agree tonight on, let's pick a date, starting whether it's next week or the week after, that, you know, we pick the same date and the time, and then go ahead and, you know, whether it's eight weeks in a row, or 10 weeks or 12 weeks, but we do what we can to get these addressed. Because if not, then they're gonna get kicked down the road, and chances are that other items will get added as we go on. So, you know, some of these have been delayed, maybe for issues that were talked about, you know, previous, and for some reason, workshops didn't come up. And so it would be easier on me to know what your priority is, so that we can set a date, and then we know what we need to do, perhaps, to get information for that particular workshop, and then let's talk it through. And I think Roxanne gave you a little sheet with the items on there, I think it's a sheet probably similar to what you used during the interview process for your ranking of candidates and what have you. So, you know, it might take a little bit, you know, of math here, I mean, I don't think there's anything controversial, I think all of them need to be worked on, so there's no need to fight over necessarily, oh my gosh, I'm not voting for that if it's not number one or number two. But if we can just get some consensus of what order you want, and then that allows me to kind of prepare, so that we plan that meeting, and make sure you have a package in front of you that has the right information.
You want this turned in today, or do you want to just admit it during the week? You want this right now, the question?
Well, two did, I mean, it's like I said, in terms of that, but even they can match, I mean, in terms of there. So the easiest thing was maybe you guys to sit down, and, you know, it takes us 10, 15 minutes to come up with your ranking of these items, I'm okay with that, in the sense, and then, you know, once I know that, I then I want to turn around and know what's your availability, and start a workshop schedule. And I think, you know, when we do the ranking, for example, we talk business tax receipts, that's probably not an item, it's gonna take a full time frame to look at, you know, but that might be something where I'd add special events to it, because that seemed to be an area when it came up, the business tax receipts, when we were doing strawberry, so, you know, a couple of these might be able to be.
It seems to me that the number one priority has to be City Hall. I mean, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but. Is everybody even agree on that?
Yeah, I wholeheartedly agree, City Hall needs to be the first priority. And then, I also have another question, I didn't see anything, at our last meeting, we had, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought there was going to be another workshop suggestion for, I don't know how to word it, but when the spirit was talking about the Process for Christ, and we had, I thought we had wanted to do some type of workshop to discuss what could be placed in public places.
At the same time, do the donation policy.
So, I mean, I kind of wrote it in at the bottom. I don't know how you wanted to word that. But I'd like to see that we do bring that back for discussion, because I don't think I would satisfied with how we ended that.
Public display.
Yeah, that sounds good, public display.
And I think I can agree with Roger on there, that that might fall well just under the city donation policy. Two separate issues, but they, you know, but I think timing, they can fit into the same one section, so I kind of pencil that in on the city donation policy.
Sidewalk requirements needs to be looked at pretty soon.
Now, some of these we could do more than one in a shot, if it's possible.
Depending on how, well.
That's a thought.
I'm gonna say something, and if this ticks you off, then it ticks you off, but knowing how long it takes us to get through just a regular meeting, citizens meeting of the council, I'm estimating that it's gonna take more time than what you think. Okay, so that's why it's broken up that way. If we plan two or three of these together, we're basically probably looking at a commission night where we're gonna be working from 6:00 to 10:00 or 11:00, and that's not an ideal workshop. You know, our brains shut down, and our butts shut down at a certain point, okay?
In which order?
Mr. Speaker, Commissioner, could you reply to this? When does the joustation contract end? It's not for quite some time, correct? The joustation contract?
Do we give these to the clerk?
Yeah, that's, well, that's kind of what the question was, I mean, I know Scott gave some information on that, but I'm just gonna say, you know, some members of your commission have taught me that they're not sure there's even contracts to be, because.
Okay, I see.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then, I'm sorry, I have so many questions. The last question I have right now is a vet coordinator, I'm not even interested discussing it, if I'm being completely honest with you, so I don't even want to have a workshop on it, do I need to vote on that?
Commissioner, recently, I think that came up, was just that there's been discussion, just like we had tonight, on fireworks events, how they're done. Right now, they're kind of on a volunteer basis, with someone that has given a yearly stipend, and there's no budget for the events. You know, there's a line item that is put in, and in your current budget here, actually the line item for special events was zeroed out.
The problem is, is we get conflicting events all the time, because they're not coordinated. We need somebody that's gonna monitor the calendar.
And also somebody that's at the table, and I say at the table, in other words, there's no one that shows up at a particular meeting for a particular event that has direct contact with the city administrator or the city commissioner, it's just, Karen's doing the, what do you call it? The market park, the Easter Day parade, the lighting of the Christmas tree.
So we're not talking about that $60,000 position, we're talking about something.
Yeah, I think. It's that and the events, the whole combination, how do you want to do events?
I've had a couple of questions about that, and I think the way that I describe it, is that the former commission put in their budget, or on their line item, $60,000 for an event coordinator, that's just a line item, that's not a salary, they're hiring somebody, they just made it, they just made it place on the line. Now, this is before I got you, and that's the only explanation I got, because I did get several phone calls about, who are we gonna pay $60,000 for? I don't believe that we should pay anybody $60,000 to do that, but I do believe we should be able to give somebody that has some responsibility as well as a budget.
It's fair, can I just write it in? We're not having the workshop tonight, let's rank that, and we'll have that discussion on what we want to do with the workshop.
Thank you for that. All right. So, yeah, I think we should have that.